Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our April 18th Board of the City Commissioners meeting. I will call our meeting to order. Please call to roll.
Agen.
Here.
Harrod.
Here.
Maynard.
Here.
Hall.
Here.
Shaw.
Here.
Dykstra.
Here.
We have a quorum.
We do have a quorum. If you're able to stand, please stand with me and we'll recite the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen. Vice Mayor Harrod, would you lead us in the flag salute, please?
Attention, position, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome each and every one of you again. And we have some young guests here that have something that they need to be at, like a jazz concert or something, I believe, that are participating in it and at seven, so I'm gonna take and move item number four up to our first item. And item number four is introduction of the Shawnee 2016 Student and Teacher Delegation for exchange trip to Japan. Kelly Tatum, are you here? Would you come up and introduce your delegates, please, ladies?
She's also the chairman. Her name's-
Well, you can come up. You can bring everybody up, hopefully. Yeah, bring them all up.
They did not add me to the list.
Where are all the boys?
Not one. Not one boy applied this year.
Are you serious?
Are you serious?
I was, we had many boys who picked up applications from all the schools, but not one boy actually applied.
What have you guys been doing to those boys?
We scared them.
Yeah. May I introduce myself?
You sure can.
My name is Jessica Brown. I am the chairman for Shawnee Sister Cities this year. I'm also a teacher at Shawnee Middle School. I teach English and Literature.
Now let Kelly go ahead and introduce.
Okay, but can they see? Okay, I wanna be sure that Cameron, the TV audience, sees all these pretty young ladies here, so that's okay.
I'm Kelly Tatum. I'm sixth grade social studies teacher at Shawnee Middle School, and I'm the delegate going this year with these wonderful young ladies. I'm really excited.
Okay, are you gonna introduce these ladies to us, please?
Baylor Brennan. Kayden Drummond. Andy Hadley. Hannah Sadie. Olivia Stovey. Emily-
Luntzikum.
Luntzikum. Mackenzie Steele.
Excuse me, someone told Mackenzie was supposed to give a speech or something? Not true?
Where's your speech?
James, why did you tell him?
I'm sorry, I guess I missed out.
She forgot. And Ellis Whitehead.
Congratulations. Good job.
Thank you.
I tell you, students, this is a trip of a lifetime. You really wanna be ready to go and be prepared, 'cause it's really a trip of a lifetime. It's experience to get out of the country and see how other students live.
Okay, we will move on to item number one. Consider approval of the consent agenda.
Mayor, could I make a motion to amend the agenda and remove item number nine tonight?
Yes, because the planning commission had not acted on it, so you wanna remove item number nine. Could we, I have a motion.
For the con- Oh, okay.
No.
Remove nine, but not-
Move nine, yeah, we'll go back to the consent.
Yeah, I'll move-
Do I have a second?
Second, yeah.
We have a second by Commissioner Dykstra.
And that's to strike the-
Strike it, move that one from.
To shelve it.
Since they haven't acted on it, the planning commission, number nine.
Defer it.
We're just deferring it till-
Defer it, not strike, defer.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I had thought I heard-
Yeah, well, you probably did. We're gonna defer. We'll defer it till they've taken action.
Shelve, defer.
Okay.
So we're just deferring it?
Right.
Okay.
We have a motion to defer it in a second, okay? Thank you for keeping us straight on that language. Okay?
And consent agenda, so everything else is approved, including the consent agenda?
No, we're gonna go back and do the consent agenda. She wanted to get that done before we went into the consent agenda. Okay, no problem. So let's vote on this one, item number nine, to defer it. Motion carries. Now we'll go to the consent agenda. Consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Dykstra and a second by Commissioner Hall. Let's vote on that. Motion carries. Item number two is citizens' participation. At this time, we encourage the citizens who have something to share with us that we may not know about. If it's not on the agenda later on, or a public hearing, please feel free to come forward and share any thoughts that you might have with us. Not seeing anyone come forward, then? I will move on to, yes, item number five.
Three.
Three, I'm sorry. Item number three. Presentation by the city manager to an employee of the month.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, April 2016 Employee of the Month is Jeff Gardner. Mr. Gardner cannot be here this evening. He actually had a planned vacation. So, but I would like to still quickly give a quick bio and congratulate him. Jeff started working at the Expo Center in July of 2001. In May 2006, he transferred to the Parks Department. And after years of hard work and dedication, he was promoted to deputy director in July 2011. Jeff is the type of employee that's willing to help out wherever he can. And it was very apparent recently, as we've had some transitions at the Expo, and because of Jeff's previous experience, he agreed to go back and assist temporarily at the Expo facility and help lead the staff there and help get that facility back on track, so to speak, and he was very instrumental in that. And he's now back in the Parks Department. But through that process, his qualities, positive attributes, were clearly defined. And so for that reason and many other reasons for his years of service, Jeff is April's Employee of the Month, and just like to thank him. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, we can still applaud him even though he's not here. Okay. Item number five. Consider a resolution declaring real property known as Lot Five and Lot Six of the, how you pronounce that?
Yagney.
Yagney addition as surplus, authorizing staff to solicit sealed bids to sell the property and set a minimum bid. Mr. Erickson?
Thank you. We discussed this property at your recent workshop, and so this action item tonight would officially allow us to dispose of the property and solicit sealed bids. Under city code and state law, you have three options when you dispose of property. You can do so under public auction, through sealed bids, or through the open market. And it would be staff's recommendation to solicit sealed bids, which would be open at your June 6th meeting. And staff is recommending a minimum bid amount of $300,000 for the property. Since we went through this so extensively at the workshop, I won't go into additional detail, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I'd maybe declare the property surplus and approve the sale, or put it up for sale.
I'll second that.
Do we have a motion by Vice Mayor Harrod and a second by Commissioner Agen? Would you read the title, please, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution declaring certain real property located at Lots Five and Six, Yagney Addition Surplus, and no longer needed for city purposes, describing said property and authorizing staff to advertise for sealed bids for the sale of said property.
Can I ask a-
That's out there. That's the Expo. The Expo property? No, not Expo, the VSI.
Yeah. So, I don't know if I should ask this question or not here, but can, is, does it, the minimum bid that we set, is that close to the appraised value?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
That's the reserve, though. That's, we have to get that, or it doesn't sell. Yeah.
That's what I'm recommending, is the reserve.
Any other questions?
Trying to remember what the- What did you just say a minute ago? Did you say 300,000 was the-
That is the recommended-
Reserve, okay.
Yes, sir.
Could you educate me on why we weren't going by what the appraised value was on that?
As the minimum.
As the minimum.
We certainly have that option. I think, you know, generally, there's, there are allowances in code for you to get close to, close to appraised value. You know, appraised value is a best guess, and we're gonna solicit sealed bids, and we may get, we may get offers that are less. So I wanted to have just a little bit of room there so that, so that we didn't have to repeat this process.
We still have the approval.
You absolutely do. You can reject all, all the bids.
Even if it meets the minimum?
He's just saying.
But to be appropriate, I guess it has to be, for him to even consider it, it'd have to be at least 300, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what you asked.
Okay, let's vote on this matter, okay? We've had a motion and a second. Motion carries. Item number six. Consider funding request for the Shawnee Veterans Memorial Committee to complete the veterans memorial in Woodland Veterans Park. Do we have a representative here?
Three or four of them.
Hey, is there three or four of these guys? We don't wanna be ganged up on. What is this thing?
Mr. Mayor, it's a privilege and honor for us to be here this evening. We typed a letter to Justin Erickson, and I hope all the commissioners have had an opportunity to read the letter. I hope it's self-explanatory. The main thing I wanted to get across was for 10 years, this committee that's been appointed by the city of Shawnee has met very diligently. And Michael, I appreciate the time that you were able to spend with us very, very much. But they've been very diligent and loyal to the purpose, and it is to build a first-class veterans memorial in Shawnee. And I think that's what we've done and completed to this point. The last remaining main item that you see on the pictures are the granite panels that will be purchased, and it takes six months for them to make it to the United States. And then at that point in time, we'll begin the process of having the over 8,000 names inscribed on these granite panels of all those veterans, or all those from Oklahoma that lost their life for the service to the country since the Spanish-American War. And those will be placed at the east end, really at the veterans park on either side of the bell and the halliters back there by the Huey helicopter. That will give more access to those that have disability to be able to see that coming from the parking lot that's behind the courthouse. So we're very proud of the, where we are at this point in time. We've worked very hard the last six months, raising over $30,000. And our request tonight is for the city to help us raise the other 30,000. And that way, we will be again to secure these panels and have them brought to the United States. So they come from overseas, and then we'll start the next final process of, we will raise the next $30,000 and hopefully come back to you to finish this whole project that we started 10 years ago. So I'd be glad to entertain any questions.
So you're asking for 30?
Tonight, yes, sir.
Okay.
Also, you're requesting that possibly set 30,000 aside in next year's budget and-
Well, if we could do that tonight, or within the next, for this budget year, and then next budget year, we would probably within a year-
That's what I understood the letter to say, is that 30,000 tonight, and then maybe after the next budget year, try to finance, and you're gonna try to match that, right?
That's correct, yes.
Mr. Erickson?
Yes, sir.
Talk to me.
You too. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, we have reviewed this proposal. We do have adequate funds in our capital improvement money that will not be spent on other endeavors, and so we do have funding available. We do recommend approval. We have, in the tentative budget that we're working on for next year, we have, we believe that we've also identified room to reserve the $30,000 to provide the additional match next year to make this project complete.
Well, I for one would like to say the project finished. I know it's been, seemed like a long time, and a lot of artwork's gone into it, so I'd move that commission set up of 30,000 and also then 30,000 in next year's budget.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Harrod and a second by Commissioner Agen. Now, let me see if I understood. You said to take the 30 out of this year and set 30 aside next year.
Right.
Okay, now let me ask you this, Ms. Arnold. You're our numbers lady. Am I seeing a nod on this, that it's okay?
Yes, we didn't, um, there's some, we're not gonna complete this year.
John, I mean, that 30,000 for next year will be matching money if they raise 30,000.
I understand, but we can't commit next.
Yeah, I know. We can just commit 30,000 this year.
You just want us to put it in the budget. So that shouldn't be in part of the motion, then, right?
No, it's not part of the-
No, so only motion we can accept from you is 30,000 this year.
Okay.
And then, you know, a bunch of discussions, we can get carried-
Yeah, we can work on that in a session.
I'll second that.
Mr. Ford, what if the price goes up on these panels and, like, the cost just goes up?
That's a good question. We've asked them that, and they assure us it will not.
Okay, but 30 is like the high number, and-
Correct.
Okay, so it could be less.
We feel very confident that what we're doing now will be duplicated next year. And they've, we've worked with them now for 10 years on this process, so they, we're a good customer of theirs.
So are you putting the names on over there where you're ordering them from? Or do you do that once you-
The names, they'll come blank here to the United States, and then SI Memorials, who did the archway for us and all that, they will inscribe the over 8,000 names once they're here, the panels.
Is there gonna be room for more names in the future?
We hope not, but there will be.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's what I said.
That's right. And where the location is, down the road, there'll be adequate space.
Oh, okay, for you to grow.
That's right, correct.
Cynthia, since this is matching, they will present an invoice to you? And that's, is that how we do those things?
We'll work out the details, how-
Okay, okay.
So we've already used the money to, you know, if you improve it, we already have a number.
Okay, okay.
Well, yeah, I'd like to make one more comment, 'cause, you know, the Adidas Foundation has really helped the city of Shawnee out with the swimming pool and the sidewalks and so forth. So I feel like they probably can't, this is not under their umbrella. So I'd like to see the, you know, the city step up and help the veterans out. This way, we get the project finished. It's a, you know, it's a, like, the pool is a great addition, and I think the completion of the veterans memorial will be a great addition.
Is that, is that a sales pitch on your motion?
I don't think anybody's arguing against you, John.
Is that legal, selling his most?
He's campaigning now.
He's trying to get somebody else to step up there and do it.
How many private funds have you raised for this so far?
Good, good question. This latest one, we've raised over 30,000, but to date, our money man, over 300,000, I believe.
390,000, 290,000.
And most of that was private funds, right? I think the city gave 50,000.
That's right, that's correct.
Okay, before now, so that's, I think that that says a lot about the public and how they feel about this. I think it's, I think it needs to be done.
Okay, we've got two sales pitches on it. Now, can we vote?
Memorial Day coming up.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, let's move. Motion carries.
Thank you, Agen, every one of you.
Item number seven.
You guys did the hard part.
Consideration of approval of a preliminary plat for Timbers Park, a replat of Block 12, the Timbers Edition, located at Oak Tree Court and Bent Tree Road, case number SO 7-16, applicant the Landrum Group. Staff, please. Hi, Justin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Okay, if you don't mind, I'd like to actually do a joint staff report with items seven and eight, as they represent preliminary and final plat for Timbers Park. Okay, so this first case here, we're looking at a property roughly 1.12 acres in size, located in the Timbers Edition, which is on MacArthur, west of Leo, just south of St. Gregory's. And this particular plat, or replat, I should say, is representative of the final phase that's currently being developed right now. So, so really, the land that we're looking at here for many years, at least since the 80s, has been viewed more as park land, detention easement-type space. And so the request that we're looking at today is to actually take that 1.12 acres and subdivide that into four separate lots, leaving about half of that park space, detention space, still intact, really along the south end. What staff has looked at so far with this project is to make sure that even, even with this re-subdivision that we have, we have, again, all stormwater drainage plans at all water that matriculates this area, runs off at the right rates, and staff's confident that that is the case, that is the case here. Staff has no objection to approval on this, and just to, just to better describe, really, the planning commission process, this died due to a lack of a second on a motion to approve. And really, I don't have a good answer, really, to that, but I think it's part really to do with what was assumed to be sewer lines that went in that should not have gone in quite yet at this time, which is not actually the case, as it, of course, turned out. These are all approved construction documents from the original plat. So staff, again, has no objection to approval of both preliminary and final plats. I provided four conditions, really, to both cases here for approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
What's that, Lot Number Five, what's it gonna be used for? Is that for the retaining, detention pond?
That's correct. It's, it's, that's exactly right. It'll be detention easement.
That's what I thought it was.
Detention pond there, correct.
Justin, were there any people who objected to this going into place?
We had no objections, and much of that had to do with, with really, no adjacent properties have any houses built on them yet. That would have been, really, the first thing I checked, or staff checked, is to make sure that we're not dealing with property already sold that's abutting apart, that may or may not come to existence. That's not the case on this one. So no, we didn't have, we didn't have any objection on this one.
And you said it died, the vote died?
We had a motion to approve, and we did not receive a second.
Somebody, you were saying that they misunderstood that there was sewage pipes or something already done?
Perhaps that was the case, yeah. Couple Commissioners had, had noticed that, that appeared pipelines gone in, and perhaps, I think it was the day before, and I was trying to clarify that just a little bit to make sure that those were inspected, and they were.
And it wasn't the case that they just went ahead and laid it and then-
That's correct, and even if they had, there's nothing that really says they can't dig a hole and put pipe on their land. They still have to have inspections, still have to-
Cool.
If we're gonna prove it, dig it up, inspect it, do all the right procedures, so.
This is the, right over there off of Leo, right? Is it kind of that new area where they're developing it over there?
So this is actually in the Timbers neighborhood. It's just further back, it's all that development, really, as it's coming out to Leo Street, that exit right there. That's exactly where it's at.
Yeah, so it's right next to Leo?
That's correct.
All right.
Any other questions?
So they didn't defer it or anything, they just-
Just let it die.
It was just like, you know, they- I was present at that planning commission meeting, and there was a lot of discussion on it, and there was a lot of concern that was brought up by the planning commissioners on that. So it did die.
It did die. If I had to describe, a couple of concerns, of course, is just a general reluctance to lose any park space. That was certainly one of the concerns that was brought up.
What's that park right down the street?
Well, Mike's here.
That's correct, right off.
If I may have questions of him.
But it's, but it's, it's not officially a park. I mean, it's just, it was just being used as-
It's been listed in the past as a common area, at some point, a park, and really, a detention easement.
But it's not one of those that we're wanting to keep, I mean-
It's not one that had amenities.
It's not city land. It's private, it's private, it's private land.
And we have a big city park right down the, like, literally right in front of it.
Correct.
But that's not city land for a park, is what I'm hearing.
This particular place is not, right?
And there already is a park, like-
That's correct.
A stone's throw away in that neighborhood, so.
It's just considered, I guess, ringed out by the local people there.
Sure, and we don't have, currently in our subdivision code, any requirements for parks when we're looking at new neighborhoods.
I'll make a motion to approve with the four-
Conditions.
Conditions.
So we're taking number seven first, and we'll vote on number eight, right?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the preliminary replat with four conditions.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Agen. Do you have a second?
Say it.
By Vice Mayor Harrod, okay? Motion carries. Item number eight, consideration of approval of final plat for Timbers Park.
Does there was any conditions on the final plat, or just those four on the preliminary? I didn't remember.
Yes, sir, there's four.
Four for each one, so there'd also be four for the final.
I maybe we approve the final plat with the four conditions as recommended by staff.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Agen. Motion carries. Item number 10. Discussion and consideration of possible action to authorize staff to enter into a contract to remodel the emergency operations center. Mr. Lynch?
Evening, Mayor.
You've been up here a lot lately.
Yes, I have.
You're spending that money in fine towels.
I'm back tonight with my hat in my hand again.
He called me last night at midnight, didn't he? Called the whole county?
Yes, we had a nice soaking rain last night, so. I'm here tonight to ask you for funding to do a remodel on our emergency operations center. We had, in the budget for this year, approved funding to redo the flooring that's in the operations room and adjoining communications rooms. While we were going through the process of obtaining quotes for that, this building was built in 1971, and the wallboard material that was on there decided it wanted to turn loose. And so we have about 30 panels of wallboard called duracand. It's like a gypsum board with a burlap covering to it. And so it was glued on the walls, and so it began to turn loose. And so for safety concerns, we went ahead and removed the rest of that material. So we're in a position now where we need to replace the wall covering with gypsum board material, also do the re-flooring of the facility. At the same time we're doing this, there were two walls that we wanted to do in some future, as we phase in the remodeling, two small walls that we'd like to remove. They're non-load bearing, to expand out the area to allow for better efficiency and, actually, for the number of people who need to be in there if we were to do a full-blown activation. So all this comes down to, now's the time to really look at doing that all at one time, rather than do part of it, come back and have to redo it again and cause that cost to go up, just to do all this at one time as we're doing that. So I asked the city manager for approval to go out for quotes for this project, hoping that it would be under the authority of his budgetary authority to contact the three contractors who gave us quotes, or contacted about four others who didn't give us any quote, they didn't want to do it. So as we wound up with, the, one of the three that actually gave us quotes came back later and said, "I can't do this, I'm withdrawing my quotes." We wound up with two quotes from contractors, but the lowest quote price is over the city manager's budgetary authority. So we're coming to you- So we're coming to you tonight to ask you to authorize staff to enter, to contract, to perform those remodeling services for us, which includes doing the wall removal, and then doing the gypsum board replacement in the emergency operations facility, not the communications rooms. The communications rooms will remain cinder block walls, as they are now, and then to do the new laminate flooring in the area. So that price, lowest quote is 28,478.54, so we're asking you for authorization to enter into that contract this evening.
Oh, that's just drywall type, man?
Just drywall tape embedded and painted.
You gotta bust out those walls?
You have to bust, we are gonna ask out, take out two walls. Fortunately, they are, they are not load-bearing walls, so they can be done, and we can get some?
They're not fire-rated either.
They're not fire-rated either, so.
Was this contract reviewed?
I'm sorry.
I was just asking.
Yes, yes, Commissioner, the contract has been reviewed by the city attorney, and was approved for.
What was the 24,840?
That's for the actual labor and materials to do the work minus the flooring. The flooring he wants us to provide.
But you have to do, you have to do it all in one shot?
We prefer to do it all in one shot, because?
Because he was under 25,000, which you wouldn't even have?
It would have been, but when we add the flooring into it, it takes us over the 25,000.
Okay, you couldn't do a change order later.
Prefer not to.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Could you educate me on several things? I'm seeing on, underneath compensation, that it says the contractor will be paid, and it says see attached estimate. Shouldn't we put in the language of actual amount instead of an estimate?
As long as the contract, from a legal standpoint, as long as the contract references and it is attached, it becomes a part of the contract. And so since there's no ambiguous statements of cost anywhere in it, it would be appropriate. Now, six and one-half dozen of the other, we could put it in and have it, you know, comport with the estimate, just so that it's all on, you know, one page. It doesn't change anything.
I guess my question was, was there a reason we put see attached estimate instead of contract amount?
We didn't. This contract was provided to us, it's a standard form contract, there's not a lot of moving parts to it. If I were drafting it, I'd probably draft a different contract, but there's absolutely nothing wrong with it. To reinvent the wheel would just be an expense to the city.
Okay, and the other item that I have is, I see under insurance that the contractor will be required to maintain general liability insurance. Was there a specific amount that we should look at to protect the interests of the city, or is there a bond in place by this individual, or how is this working? Educate me.
I have not checked into this, and Justin may be able to speak into it, but I would assume as per practice that there's at least a million dollars general liability coverage to report with the GTCA.
And they have to provide the accord form to us. Any contractor who works for the city has to provide a certificate of insurance to be kept on file with the city, so that we're assured.
And work was calm.
And work was calm, yes, sir.
Okay, so the thought is a million, or is there any way to identify what the amount is?
It would be a million, it'd be our, it's a least limit, usually.
We'll verify that, ma'am, before the contract.
If you're talking about requiring a bond, then you're talking about a two to three percent increase in the cost, because that's what a bond costs, even on a project that size, so you?
We're not asking for a bond on this one.
And is there any historic work performance by this contractor, or was he evaluated?
I did check with references, and also, he, it was already listed as a vendor for the city, and he has, has done work for the city before.
Okay, thank you.
If you have any questions.
I was gonna say, I move to approve.
Go ahead.
A motion by Commissioner Dogg, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hall, let's vote. Motion carries.
Thank you.
The next item is the budget amendment that the city treasurer's worked up to cover the cost of the contracts that we just approved.
What is that 120,000 balance after amendment on there for?
That's left in the account.
That's what's in that group.
Then she's taking 21,000 out of it.
That's unobligated, unspent funds that were left in the account.
Yeah. It's 120,000. So the balance before amendment was 9,000. The decrease was, or the decrease was 21,000, and that went?
Oh, I'm sorry, that is at the very end, the last column, it should only be 30,000.
Okay.
On the very bottom right there?
Because the original, that account, original, had 9,000 in it, and amounted 21,000, so the balance is 30.
Thirty.
Thirty, not 120,000. Yes, yes, thank you.
My math is bad, but.
Thank you.
Now, where are we?
Waiting for a motion on this matter.
Okay.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Harry, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hall, let's vote.
With the modification, right?
That column isn't really useful, you think it's the very bottom, because actually the balance after amendment, that 30,000 is what we're getting.
Just an extra 90 in there, it's like?
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Well, item number 12 is acknowledged sales tax report.
I have a few other things to add, too.
Okay, and you gave us a nice little handout, I believe, didn't you?
Well, the good thing is that sales tax is up 126,000, which is over 8.8% over last year. Tonight also, I want to do a quick financial overview. I'm sorry, this is small, that's why you have print. This is actually the sales tax, which is in your sales tax report, showing that as of fiscal year-to-date, over the prior year, is 643,000. We're up overall 4.48%.
Is that after rebate or before rebate?
The rebate, no, this is before rebate, but in the budget, what I've done is I took the sales tax, I allocated it out for that property, but the expense part is an expense in the budget, so it really washes, so it balances. It's not money I have to take out of our, I have an expense line for that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense, but?
This is including the marketplace.
Does not include any deductions for the marketplace.
I'm sorry?
Does not include any deductions for the marketplace.
No.
That's what I said. So with the deductions, would it still be positive?
Yes, because?
126, right, is what we're looking at with the deductions?
No, that's, that was overall, that's just what we were over from last year. The reports just came out today. The dollar amount that hit our bank came last week, but the reports today, and I'm going to be paying rebate, I don't know exactly what that is yet, because I haven't had the March, you know, reports until today, so we'll be sending him another check, because per contract, I'm sending him a check quarterly now, so.
And we've already mailed him one check?
Yes, I caught up from all the, from day one, when the first store went in, to?
Is it running on the timeline? What do you see, you know, how we set that contract up? Do you feel like we're getting more money, because we put a total dollar cap on it, and then put a time cap?
We will pay it off shortly, I mean, a lot shorter than we just paid.
At this rate, it'll be paid off a lot quicker than that timeframe, that's great.
I have a friend that's on the city commission at Midwest City, and their sales tax was down, and he blames Hobby Lobby and Shawnee for that reason.
We're doing well, we're not gonna complain.
Well, they blamed it all on Hobby Lobby, but we got the Hobby Lobby, our tax.
And with the new sporting goods store, you know, we're gonna see an increase, it should be interesting to see what, you know, Shawnee's growing, and people, we're getting more versatile things, so people don't have to go, "Oh, I'm gonna go to Shawnee for here, but I need to run Oklahoma City." They come here for, like, Pat Smar or Hobby Lobby, and they say, "Well, I can do here and that lunch," and so we're seeing, we're gonna go into the top retails. I need a copy of this, I can't see this.
I did see while you're getting that stuff, that new burger restaurant that's opening up out here?
The Garage.
The Garage was picked in the top five hamburger places in Oklahoma.
We got some pretty good ones here already.
Yeah.
We do. Hey, so you're gonna go into the top five here?
Right.
Which I guess is on this page that you're on.
Well, no, this is actually, these are the top 10 revenues, and this is based on catch. So this goes through March 31st, which does not include March's sales tax. But the sales tax, we're up over 4%, this is just general fund. Use tax, we're up 300,000, or almost 34%. So overall, the top 10 revenues, we're up over 5% from last year, which?
Is the alcohol tax, is that, where's that, does that come from, like, stores inside liquor, liquor store sales, inside liquor, or does it come from alcohol at restaurants and everywhere? Alcohol beverage tax?
It comes from the restaurants, too.
The restaurant, it's all alcohol?
If they break it out, right. It's hard, they try to have them break it out by, as far as I'm aware, it's all alcohol, so. Yeah, that's doing pretty well.
You mean itemized off the beach receipt? They try to?
Some of them do, some of them don't.
Yeah, I don't see how restaurants, how they would do that.
Some restaurants here in town do. You'll see it on the receipt.
And the cigarette tax is from all the? All the?
Cigarettes.
Tobacco.
Smoke shops, all?
Smoke shops, everything, huh?
So, this one, I'm sorry, it's pretty much the same thing. This one is showing currently a sales tax where it's 72.47% of the budget, and we're right at the three-quarter mark of the budget, but as you remember, we have not, this does not include March's income. Because, and like, the cable, electric, all that stuff, they'll run about behind, you know?
Sorry, we're gonna get four months, come on.
Pretty much, yes. These are the top codes. You can see, so far this fiscal year, we've collected 13,548,866, 215 times 216, which is the current fiscal year. Last year, we were about 12.9 million, so we're up a good, you know, and if you can see, the retail trades, that's the biggest increase.
Was that at the same time?
It's the exact same pay, day, to the same day.
The whole year, okay.
It's from July 1st to March 31st.
Okay.
I'm a little surprised that those utilities showing negative.
Well, utilities are very flexible, because we have not had an extremely cold winter, so the gas might be lower.
Okay. Plus, the price of fuel is down, so.
And the price of fuel is down, plus it's warm now, so you're gonna see electric, they're hard to gauge. Usually, if electric's up, gas is down, if gas is up, electric's down. So that's all, that's a very seasonal item, so. Right now, yes, it is down a little bit.
That's real mild.
But we've had a pretty mild winter.
It's like 80, almost 80,000, yeah.
But also, the big one is, well, the electric, we have, we're coming into the high season, and last summer wasn't extremely, extremely hot either, so, you know?
That's good.
Well, for the revenues. So, as you can see, overall, the city is in a very good spot right now, and I'm very pleased where the revenues are coming in, but we do watch it carefully, and, you know, because just as it goes up, it can go down, but?
How about two years ago, was it the same kind of trend, like, if we look at this two years ago?
Two years, it was starting to come back up. When I first got here, it was going down, and then it started raising.
Because the price of fuel had a lot to do with that as well, right? They're spending five bucks a gallon of gas, sorry.
And you can call me or email me, I have any questions after you go through this.
Well, only question, I mean, this is, this is, this is good, I mean, it's a good report, but, I mean, how's our SMA doing revenue and stuff? You look at that, too, right?
Yes, I do. SMA is doing, is pretty much right on target, he's really curbed its expense. We'll go more in that in two weeks when we start talking about the budget, where he's at, he, but the revenues are real, they're coming in pretty much standard as they have been. We're going into, it's been kind of dry, so people are watering because it got hot earlier, but it's right on target, too.
Is it possible to show us a graph of, like, for the last three years for SMA, to let us look at, like, the trend that you, you show here in this on the first page of the costs over the months?
Actually, hopefully, next week, you'll get your SMA budget, and it has three years of history on it.
Okay.
And actually, if you would like, I can send it electronically, it doesn't print well, but electronically, I can open it up, and it will have five years since the day I started, of history, on every revenue line, every expense line. And those are actual, they're taken off the audit.
Meters and stuff.
So. And I'm gonna kind of write into the next item, which, does anybody else have any questions about the sales tax or revenues?
Very important, thank you very much.
But if you have any other questions, please let me know. But we'll go over, in two weeks, I plan to start talking about the general fund budget and SMA, so you'll, we'll go more into revenues there. But we are a very fortunate community right now. And the next item on the agenda is the health insurance. Currently, these are the, what the employee, the city contributes for each, the employee, employee spouse, children, and the family, and these are, does this have a? And then the other side, the right-hand side, is what the employee contributes. These are our current rates. The current premiums for employee only are 418, employee and spouse 905, employee and children 782, and employee and family is 1,269, which is, okay. Dustin's here, if we have any other questions. We went out and looked, and there's basically three major players, correct me if I'm wrong, three major players in Oklahoma, Aetna didn't bid, United Healthcare bid, it was the same at the current rate that we are paying currently with Blue Cross Blue Shield. Blue Cross Blue Shield bid came in originally at 11%, but Dustin was able to negotiate it down to 6.2% increase.
Because United came to 60?
I guess I have a couple of questions before we progress to the next level there. When you say no bid, they just didn't respond whatsoever, did you call, did you say?
My name's Dustin Brand, I'm with Insurica, the city's benefits consultant. To answer that question, they did come in with a bid, and it came in late, and I did go ahead and send that over to Jennifer to distribute to the insurance work group, and followed up on that. Basically, Aetna came in right about where you are with Blue Cross's negotiated rate, you know, Blue Cross is at the 6.2%. Aetna came in about three-quarters of a point less.
And were they negotiated with also?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so all three of the insurance groups were negotiated with?
So there was six?
None of them came down like?
6.2.
Like Blue Cross Blue Shield.
6.25, or 6.025? Because there are, there are three-quarters of a point below, or?
Well, Aetna was three-quarters of a point off from where Blue Cross is at the negotiated rate, yes. The 6.2% basically was negotiated down 135,000, so, off the original bid that Blue Cross came in with. We did go back to all the carriers, we did advise them to, they needed to basically provide their best rate, because it was a municipality, and it was an insurance work group that we were working with, and that insurance work group, we explained the process on how they submit recommendations to city management, and then from there, it goes to city council.
So, I'm a little confused. So you just said that Aetna did provide a bid, but here it says there was?
I wasn't aware they did, but it said they?
It was late, and it was high, so?
It was delivered late, we received it late, so it was, we had several meetings by that time.
Like the close, the bids were already closed by the time they were received, okay.
Right, I did go ahead and update the analysis, and that's what I sent to Jennifer, and that she distributed and shared with the work group.
I mean, is there a reason why they're consistently, like, increasing their rates? Is there any?
It's just, it is, it's medical trend, it's pharmaceutical trend, more so the medical trend these days. You know, they're facing more, you know, higher hurdles with, and higher barriers with the Affordable Care Act, they're having to add in coverages that they've not provided before.
Or screenings and?
Right, right.
The free screenings?
Yeah, the free screenings, yes. So it all comes at a cost. Pharmacy right now is the big hurdle that they're struggling with. If you look at your renewal, your medical trend is? If you look at your renewal, your medical trend is, medical trend, seven point seven percent. Your pharmaceutical trend is fifteen point nine percent. So it's trending higher than medical. So that's a significant difference. And a lot of it has to do with the life-changing drugs that we're seeing come into the marketplace. You know, the hep C drug, that, there are two hep C drugs, Harvani and Zavali, right? It eradicates it from the body, that's great, but that's about a ninety-four to an eighty-four thousand dollar treatment per person that's treated.
Is there, no, I guess, I was wondering if there was any way that the city could have like a... Without being, like, I guess legally, if they could have like another, like a super insurance for those folks, and then your base, your baseline people, to keep the cost down, have a different group within the group? A larger group?
Carving those people. You could do that. You could buy, you know, transplant riders and things like that if the plan were self-funded. Since your plan's fully insured, you have to, you know, or it is a contract and it's set. I mean, we can do some customization to the plan.
We're buying a product, like off of a chassis that they, they develop for the employer. Instead of us developing it, developing it and telling them to build it for us or be a TPA?
Right.
I got you.
Is it, does it matter how big the pool is for, for, on rates?
Yes, absolutely.
So, have we looked at different ways to like join forces with other cities or something?
O-MAG or something?
Yeah, you know, trying to get better rates?
Well, O-MAG had an association plan years ago, and that plan, it became more difficult for them to secure medical reinsurance or medical stop-loss to reinsure those large claims. So it became more of an issue. And so O-MAG finally just decided that they couldn't continue that association plan for the municipalities, but it ran for years, ran successfully. But when the Affordable Care Act was on the horizon, that's when O-MAG decided that they needed to get out of that.
Just back out.
Right.
Let me, let me just kind of share with you. James and I are on that committee, and you were able to attend that meeting.
Yeah, okay.
That's okay. I'm just saying, there's some real creative thinking going on with our city manager and the financial people that if we could get a couple of, and I'll just throw it out, if we could somehow get...
Ideas?
The meal, the bill down here.
Right.
And us, then we might have six hundred, or get some more in the group. And then we might also, which we have to go out and take care of all those sore throats and everything, might be able to provide our own, or work out a deal here for a clinic that would service their employees and our employees, you know, for all the minor stuff.
Right.
And, and so I know they're working hard on that, and there's real...
Could we go with another government, like another? For example, there's a lot of governments around here. There's, you know, tribal, county, not just that, even, even if not government, but like, say, larger employers for the county. If, to, to have like a large group, you know?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about, right?
Yeah, I'm thinking like employers that are in Shawnee.
That's what I've come up with, like the mill.
He said Shawnee Milling.
Well, he said, OB U, Rock and Gregory.
Yeah.
OB U, maybe, the largest employer.
Statewide, but...
OB U would be really good to see.
OB and a A, and a Rock and Gregory.
Well, I do think we're gonna have to start thinking, Michael, out of the box. You know what I'm saying? Is because it's every year, and, and what we're seeing on these drugs, I mean, the heat was on, on the hospital.
Three hundred bucks for a family, you know?
I'm telling you. And when you stop and think about it, what, I mean, and we've got people that are not, you know, their salaries below the poverty level.
Right.
And when you start having insurance for them and all these things, it is a tough blow. So I would hope that this commission now and in the future, well, instead of waiting till time to come up for this renewal, to start working very hard on...
Be proactive.
Be proactive and try to put a plan together. And, and I'm sure if it would save the Shawnee Milling money, they would be interested in it because all of a sudden, you know, and if we combine theirs and ours, we might have six hundred. And we find, say, can I just throw this out? And Finley and Cook, right up here, got two hundred employees. If you could throw, you know, some of these... Well, the school's got their own bill.
They got their state.
State insurance, yeah.
But if you could just combine and come up with a thousand, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
Then you could probably justify somebody, you know, for them, have your own little clinic, you know, with a nurse practitioner or whatever that is.
DA or whatever.
Yeah, and, and save some money. But I do know Justin and them are already working on that, and thinking out of that box and doing it. But I would like for this commission and the one going forward not to lose that and start talking about it real soon, because if you wake up, it'll be this time a year from now.
Yeah.
You know?
Our plan needs to renew July one.
Yeah.
Well, okay.
So...
Tough issue.
So I'm a little bit confused here.
Can we get back to our presentation and just kind of go through it?
Yeah.
I think some of your questions will be answered.
And these are just, it's in your packet. These are just some of the difference between the Blue Cross Blue Shield and the United Healthcare. And I didn't, I wasn't aware about the Aetna bid.
How many members have actually hit maximum out of pocket?
I'm sorry? I don't have any information.
Is it, is it different than like, say Medicare, where you have maximum out of pocket, and you have true out-of-pocket costs for, for your, you know, like your part D?
Right.
Your part D, your drug cost is actually different than your...
No.
It's all one?
It's all one. Your maximum out-of-pocket is a true number now, all deductibles relating to medical expenses.
Copays.
Copays, and pharmacy copays as well.
Okay.
Also, so once you hit that maximum out-of-pocket, you're done for the rest of the calendar year.
And there's three different plans. We have the seven fifty, one thousand, and two thousand. All these numbers are based on the two thousand plan. That's all that we have ever talked about with the city contributing is the two thousand plan. If an employee, like I like the seven fifty, so I pay the difference between the two thousand plan and the seven fifty. Employees can buy up if they choose.
What, are we on Blue Cross right now?
Yes, we are.
That been for the last several years.
Yes.
So these are just, like, this is based on the two thousand plan. Out-of-pocket max for Blue Cross is four thousand. United Healthcare would be six thousand. And all this is all in your packet, so I don't want to spend too much time. But one of the big things that I've heard from a couple of people, from the work group, the urgent care is a prime example. For the Blue Cross, two thousand plan, right now it's thirty-five dollars. And we have a lot of people that do use the urgent care. It's gonna go up to seventy-five if we went to United Health, so...
Seventy-five? Not for emergency care or for urgent care?
Urgent care. I like prime example on the seven fifty plan for the urgent care, it's twenty dollars. And I didn't, and I don't even think that is an option for the seven fifty plan with United Health. Staff is recommending, the work group, I should say, is recommending staying with Blue Cross Blue Shield. And we know that there is a increase, and it's about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. What I'm suggesting is that we do a fifty-fifty split. So that for the employee only, the city contribution would go up for twelve dollars and ninety-six cents a month. It comes out to be eighty-one thousand dollars that the city would contribute toward, and then the employees would pick up the rest.
And that's with the two thousand?
With the two thousand.
So what's, what's the total dollars?
It's eighty-one thousand on each side.
For us, and they, and they have to pay eighty-one thousand.
Correct, yeah. Twelve ninety-eight, because there's some rounding.
At, so if a family, a family, employee and a family, it's gonna cost him forty bucks.
Forty bucks, yes.
Forty bucks a month?
Correct. Twenty dollars a pay period. Because currently, right now, the employee family, which I don't think I put that on, there's fifty-five, and my numbers for the fifty-five, which is in there, includes the union too.
Did the working group, the group, they agree to the fifty-fifty?
Yeah, they talked, well, they talked about they would like a hundred percent, but...
It's just the increase is fifty percent, just for that one eighty, not the whole premium, just the increase, right?
Right.
Right. The increase, because we pay, you know...
Really, it's like twenty-five, or twenty-six dollars, and we're paying thirteen, they're paying thirteen?
Correct. And we have, we have a hundred and twenty-nine employees on employee only. We have forty-two employees on employee spouse. Employee and children are seventy-two, and employee and family, there's fifty-five.
Does the union employees get this too?
It will be negotiated.
They're really subsidizing the families. I mean, they have to.
Well, I mean, we don't, we're not top labor payers, so you have to give them a benefit. And, I mean, to keep good staff, and we have good staff, so, I mean, forty bucks a month to employee, it's a pretty good hit.
That's not a paycheck, that's a month.
A month.
So it's ten bucks a week.
We get paid, yeah, bi-weekly.
Well...
Yeah, so twenty dollars a pay period.
That's why I'm saying forty dollars a month is a pretty good hit for employee.
That's a couple cups of coffee, though. It's two cups of coffee.
We're buying your coffee.
I don't buy that.
So, what are you asking? Let me see if I understand. Your recommendation is, and I hear things kind of funny, is that we pay half of this increase and they pay the other?
That is correct.
Right.
And we accept the Blue Cross proposal.
And we accept the Blue Cross.
And the other proposals, well, Dustin can go in more too, the vision, the dental, those are all... The employees pay for that one hundred percent.
Okay, okay. Well, I know this much, I, I've watched Dustin work on this project, having been on that committee. And I mean, it's, it's a struggle, trying to get the rates in there. And I, I think Blue Cross first started out at, what, eleven or twelve?
Eleven.
Eleven percent, and getting it down to six point two, he worked hard on it. So I commend all of the, the human resource department and all that.
I move that we pay the, what, eighty-one?
It's a fifty-fifty.
And go with Blue Cross.
And go with Blue Cross. The other company is recommended by the committee.
Okay, we have a motion that we pay half for the increase.
Next year, it's gonna be a hundred eighty, what, a hundred eighty thousand dollars more is what you're estimating?
Correct.
What is the percentage on that? Is that still the six-two?
Yeah.
Or is it just...
We, we pay...
Where's the...
We're gonna pay three point one of that six point two increase.
Yeah, of the increase.
Right.
But the six point two increase is for next year is what we're talking about?
Yes. For the full year.
It isn't the current, what we're talking about now.
July one to June thirtieth of two thousand seventeen. And this will give us time to look at other options, like the work group, like Mayor has brought up, maybe a clinic, maybe a group, you know, group with somebody else. We need to renew our open enrollments in May, so...
Well, you've got...
I'm not involved in the work group, so I...
When did they meet?
I was at a few years ago, and it's different.
There's Jennifer...
Different positions, it's got...
Jennifer Gotham may be able to tell us.
HR.
Three commissioners.
The work group has representatives from all departments. So all employees have representation.
And there's three commissioners?
There's three commissioners that were appointed by you guys.
Michael and myself and James.
You're, you're included in the...
Yeah, I'm there in spirit. I can't, I actually can't sit on it.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Okay, did you find out who did all that?
Don't comment, I'd make, I wish there was more. I wish we could afford to bag more of it.
Okay, so this...
I feel so hurt.
Right?
Man, feeling generous today.
I'm serious.
You didn't say it at the meeting, this isn't...
People put in a hard day of work, and, you know, at the end of the month, if they're taking forty dollars more...
James, I wish we could pay all of it. So if we're wishing, I wish we could pay all of it.
Come on, okay, let's vote.
We got a motion, second?
Yeah, we got a motion and a second. Let's vote.
Only for half, though, right?
Yeah.
Eighty-one thousand, whatever it is.
So are you comfortable? These are the current contribution rates, so we are adopting those because...
Right. That's what the motion was.
Can you read me the motion, please, Lisa?
The motion is to accept the Blue Cross proposal...
Right.
And to pay one-half of the increase.
And to accept the staff's recommendation on the other insurance, I mean, the committee's recommendation on the other insurance.
Which state? Okay?
Thank you, Lisa.
James, vote.
Well, it's not him, it's me. I guess I'm concerned over that we're just kind of blindly accepting the rest of the, the recommendation here on all the other pieces of the...
But we don't pay any of that.
All the other pieces are one hundred percent.
The optionals are optional.
Optionals are all one hundred percent by the employers.
And I can go through that really quick. Commissioner Shaw, the dental plan has no increase, no cost increase. The vision plan has a four point six percent increase, which is thirty-six cents on an employee only, which they pay a hundred percent of that cost. So there's very nominal increases, whether there are increases and the employees pay the full cost of that.
I guess the only one I had a question about was the prudential life. I'd seen that it had like a seventeen percent increase in it, and was wondering what, what impact that might have, but if it's...
It's an optional.
It did have a seventeen percent increase. That equates, though, it sounds large, but dollar-wise, that only equates to a couple thousand dollar increase. And it had been a zero percent increase for six years in a row, so, so you kind of average it out over seven years. It's not, you know...
Okay, we've all voted. Let's, motion carries. Okay. Item number fourteen, consider bids on the Union Street sidewalk project.
Man, I can't do math very good.
Okay, item fourteen A is the bid opening for our Union Street sidewalk, which is, goes from the Shawnee Middle School out on North Union to the intersection in MacArthur. We got four bids back. First bid opened was from Rudy Construction out of Oklahoma City. Their base bid was two hundred seventy-two thousand, seventy-four dollars. Their ad alternate bid was thirty-seven thousand, two hundred. And the ad alternate bid is the Hawk pedestrian glided crossing signal, the Hawk, the solar Hawk system that we used out there on Bryant Street. Except the one on Bryant Street.
You have to push it, and then it starts flashing.
But that's what they handled. The second bid was received from S and J Construction from Sepulpa, Oklahoma. Their base bid was two hundred eighty-five thousand, eight hundred eighteen dollars and fifty cents. And their ad alternate was forty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. Next bid opened was from Parathon Construction from Edmond, Oklahoma. Their base bid was a hundred fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and one dollars. Their ad alternate bid was thirty-five thousand, five hundred. And the last bid opened was from CP Integrated Services out of Oklahoma City. Their base bid was a hundred seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred forty dollars and seventy-five cents. And their ad alternate bid was forty-three thousand, two hundred forty-four dollars and eighty-two cents. And we would ask that the item be deferred until we add the numbers up and come back with the recommendation.
I have a motion to defer by Vice Mayor Herring and a second by Commissioner Hall.
Mr. Crywick, you're welcome. There's like a spec for these materials. I mean, they're all bidding on the same materials. Is it mash or rebar or...
Yeah, no, it's all the same materials.
Okay.
Same bid book and everything. And actually, the pedestrian crossing was specified as a Hawk solar path, Hawk solar system.
Kind of like the one right over there by the...
On Bryant Street.
OB U or...
No, it's one on Bryant Street.
The one on Bryant?
Down, toward the south. Okay.
And the reason why we did it as an ad alternate was to see what, what our quotes will be, purchasing it directly from the vendor and having him install it, and compare that to the ad alternate. It could save us a few thousand dollars by us doing it ourselves, like we did on Bryant Street, so...
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let's vote. Motion carries. Under the consider bids, item number B is auditorium HVAC. Linda, it's actually, I think we're gonna see this maybe happen. Linda, it's actually, I think we're gonna see this maybe happen, it's been a struggle happening.
Keep our fingers close.
One more, one bid. James, boy, the one bid. I was smiling. I was smiling, so I meant just one more bid. Thank you.
Thank you. Wow, I'd say so.
Eighteen thousand dollars for a wall.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is the bid opening for the auditorium, uh, H V A C project. Uh, we had two bids returned. The, uh, there is several alternates on this. One is a deduct for the, the brick screen wall that would, would have been in the back of the auditorium to, to block the view of the, the units. Uh, the next two, which is the dedicated air system and the V R F, uh, there were some additional, uh, equipment that was approved for them to bid on that could possibly take the bid up or down. And, uh, the new L E D lighting, uh, and new ceiling tiles in the auditorium. The first bid was from the Hardisty team from Oklahoma City. Their base bid, six hundred forty-three thousand ninety-six dollars. Uh, deduct for the wall of fifty-five thousand. They did not bid on the alternate equipment. Uh, an add alternate for L E D lighting at forty-nine thousand seven hundred seventy-two dollars. And an add alternate for new ceiling tiles, seventy-five thousand eight hundred sixty-eight dollars. Second bid from Jim Cooley Construction, Oklahoma City, base bid, five hundred and sixteen thousand seven hundred dollars. With a deduct for the wall of eighteen thousand nine hundred. A deduct for the dedicated air system of six thousand. And a deduct for the V R F of five hundred. An add alternate L E D lighting, thirty-eight thousand. An add alternate new ceiling tiles, twenty-five thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Did the engineer give any kind of estimate what the L E D lighting would save in cost and operation?
Uh, no, no. Uh, there, there wasn't, there was no type of estimate at all on.
Significant.
On the construction or.
Yeah, it is.
James, did you have a specific type of tile that you asked about them placing in there too, or was it just what?
It was just replacing the ceiling tile itself that's, that's up there.
Just like these acoustic tiles?
Just like these, yes.
So you're gonna go back and review them, is that what you're asking for?
Yes, the staff's recommendation is to defer this to the next meeting so we can look further into the bid.
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Shaw, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Agee, let's vote. Michael?
Oh, didn't see it.
Snuck it in early. Motion carries. Okay. Item number fifteen, new business.
There's no new business, sir.
No new business. Commissioners comments at this time.
Yeah, I'd like to say, um, Justin, I was gonna ask you, have we got a plan to eradicate any of the mosquitoes in our area? Cause, uh, last year we had a lot of rain, we had a lot of mosquitoes. And, um, you know, they're saying that this summer could be real bad for the spread of like infectious disease like Zika and maybe West Nile. And just wanna kind of know if that's on your radar and like what, what's going on?
We, we do spray for mosquitoes and I, I don't, uh, I can, I can absolutely report back to you at the next meeting with, with the details in terms of what, uh, what the schedule is and how that's operated, I don't know offhand. Uh, but we do do that, we did do that last summer, and so we do have that capability.
I, I mean, and is it gonna be any different, is it just gonna be business as usual, I guess, or are we kinda?
You know, realistically, I think, unfortunately, um, that, uh, that can help, it can help, but it's, it's, um.
It's not gonna eradicate.
It's not gonna eradicate, you know, it's, and, and they're, uh, with that activity.
What about standing water, maybe educating the public, whatever? I'm just wondering if we, we should kind of get ahead of it before it, like run pumps and get water out of the low, low line areas over there by the, the old bowling alley or something, I don't know. It just seems like there's mosquito prone areas that.
There certainly are, and I don't wanna, um, I don't wanna give you false hope and I, and I think that's what I would do if I tried to overestimate the, the amount, our ability to control it. Um, I think we're gonna be somewhat limited, you know, a lot of the standing waters obviously on private property and we, uh, there's no, um, you know, there would be no requirement for anybody to, to drain a pond or to do that. Um, many of those ponds are used, you know, for decorative or for, for irrigation for, for animals and other, other means, so, um, and of course, we're surrounded by an area and unincorporated land where that activity's not gonna happen either, so, um, I think probably the best people can do is personal prevention, stay indoors, use screens, use bug repellent on themselves. Uh, we will certainly, um, and I'll, I'll review our current plan and, and report back to the next meeting with what we do at present and if we can step that up, um, but, but we're gonna be unfortunately kind of limited.
Were people that don't have the, the means to, to buy the, the bug spray or, or whatnot or, I don't know, I'm just wondering. I'm, I'm thinking they're, they're acting like the, CDC's acting like this is gonna be a big issue, so I don't know, just was.
And there may be some resources available to, you know, at a state level for that and we can, we can certainly monitor that, but.
All right, appreciate it, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Any other commissioner comments?
I do. My head, please. I was just gonna say that we had a great turnout this, uh, last Friday night for the first ever Red Bud Festival, uh, called, um, Brick Town or what was it called?
Not on the bricks.
Not on the bricks, yeah. Anyhow, I went, I attended, I ate my free meal and gosh, there was, it was so good to see so many people downtown having fun and enjoying, uh, the downtown on a Friday night, that was the third Friday that, that they have the, the, uh, third Friday of every month, but this particular one was the Red Bud Festival celebration and I just wanted to say that the turnout was fantastic and I really appreciate all the effort that Seth went through to put that together for a first time festival that was very successful.
Good, I'm glad you brought that up, that was a great, great event. Okay now, Commissioner Shaw.
Um, recently, or actually I've been attending the planning commission meetings and I would like to just indicate that I'm very impressed with the way that, uh, our planning commission tries to go about conducting the business and especially with the guidance of our city planner. I think that he puts a lot of time and effort and energy into every action and, um, I certainly appreciated it from the standpoint of my particular neighborhood, um, who is definitely known for setting a tone. Um, they have a lot of concerns and they approach it very assertively in trying to ensure that their investments are heard and the planning commission does listen. And they do, do give equal, uh, consideration, I think. On another note, on the planning commission, I would like to again suggest, uh, and I don't see Dawn in here, but please look at that, uh, issue about placement of warning sirens near homes. Um, I'd certainly like to see some type of guidance put out, uh, for neighborhoods who are, are new neighborhoods who are near those, um, warning sirens, so that they don't get blasted. Also, I'd like to encourage, um, that, you know, I live on Bryan Street and there's, was recently a lot of discussion, I guess between O D O and county and, and the city in regard to, uh, the Bryan Street interchange. And I think this particular issue needs to be readdressed. I think we need to revisit the studies, I think we need to revisit the resolution, and I'm just very concerned about the level of discussion that we're getting into and the commitments that we're making without really, uh, looking at, uh, recent actions and recent needs.
Is it on? Anybody else?
I just don't mention, uh, Justin, I was gonna email you today and I'm just busy and forgot about it, but anyhow, on the street gate downtown, I just interrupted or interrupted somebody else's Facebook where they was telling that they're gonna fill in the concrete bump out, and I said, well, I don't think that's quite true. They said, well, I bid with the city engineer, and I said, well, I just left the city engineer's office and he didn't say a word about it on Friday afternoon, so, uh, I don't know, you know. I'd say, uh, if, uh, we have a question about construction or what's going on or whatever else, please call the planning department or Justin or John because, uh, they were pouring concrete, but they weren't pointed in the bump out, so, and there's still gonna be trees and shrubs and the greens and so forth, so I hope I squash that, it's over the weekend, but anyhow, I don't, we, I mean, we've had, like I told, we've had three years or more to address that. Uh, the staff has been to all kinds of meetings, we've had hearings and everything else on it, and, uh, let's move on to some more constructive.
My lovely wife and I have had dinner the last two weeks down at the number one rated restaurant in the state. Boomerang on Main Street. I don't know if you saw that recognition and have to walk a little bit, but that's quite an accomplishment, folks, with all the restaurants in this state and how it was picked, so I, I encourage each and every one of you to go down, they received that big maiden Oklahoma award as the top restaurant and, uh, uh, you had to walk about a half a block and I mean, that's good.
Words.
That's good for us, but it is worth it, I'm telling you what, to go down and support those people, so I encourage each and every one of you to go to Boomerang on Main Street.
They got one on the north side too, you know.
Yeah, but, you know, they're, they're, they're feeling the pain down here because of street. Now, the manager said to me, we know we will reap great rewards which, when this is completed, you know, and, uh.
Hopefully it don't take as long as Kick Bo did.
Well, it's not, I mean, it's, it's moving right along, but I just wanted to say that, that's quite, that's quite a deal, you know, for Shawnee to have a, a restaurant to get that award, and I'm, I'm just really proud. The other thing is, is that the Vo-Tec out here, if you haven't heard about their robot deal.
Robotics.
Robotics, man, they're going to St. Louis, aren't they? Did they win, they win the state?
National.
And going to the national for building robots, so it's quite a, quite a deal, a lot of great things happening in our city. Okay, then I will adjourn our city commission meeting and call our Shawnee Airport Authority to order. I will declare we have a quorum. I'll consider, number one is consider approval of the consent agenda.
So move.
Have a motion to approve of Vice Mayor Harrod, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Doctor, let's vote. Motion carries. Any new business?
No, sir, no new business.
No new business, adjourn, then I will adjourn the Shawnee Airport Authority and call to order the municipal authority. Item number, uh, we'll declare we have a quorum. And item number one is consider approval of the consent agenda.
So move.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hall, do we have a second?
I'd like to have some discussion on item B and C.
Okay.
Um, on, if I may.
Yeah, I said okay.
One B, is the bond going into effect four eighteen sixteen, or is it in place in October? I was confused because in the language of the agreement, it shows October, uh, two thousand and fifteen, are we just looking at ratifying this, or what are we doing?
You pull that up, just a minute.
The bond goes into effect after the project is complete, except for the punch list.
So is it like a six month period or something?
Accepted. Yeah.
So I just want it educated, if there was a process.
Did you get educated just then?
A, a little bit, not much.
Okay, I don't know, that's what I'm saying.
Is, is it a standard, is what I'm asking? That, that you wait that period of time between signing and?
Yes, ma'am, it's a pretty, pretty, pretty common timeframe, by the time we wrap a project up, get to the punch list and then, um.
You had two, okay, that was one, that was the other.
Uh, the other one, again, is it a common occurrence for bonds of this type to have a principal and a corporation listed on it?
Don't get worried.
I've not reviewed this particular bond, are you referencing actual surety and the entity performing the work?
Right.
Yes, that's common, necessary.
Okay. Cause it has like the undersigned as being all phase electric, then the principal is being National American Insurance.
Correct, yes. It's like Ken Boyer and then your.
That's his insurance company.
Okay.
Correct.
There you.
Satisfied.
You're satisfied, okay? Okay, then I think I had a motion.
Second.
And a second, okay, let's vote. Motion carries. Item number two, discussion and possible action of refinancing Oklahoma Water Resources Board loan. Mr. Erickson?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, you have quite a bit of information in your packet, this is a little confusing, but, but essentially the Oklahoma Water Resources Board is refinancing or investigating the refinancing of some of the revenue bonds from series two thousand and ten. And as a result, they are estimating some cost savings and, uh, in your packet was a letter dated March twenty-fourth, two thousand and sixteen from them and addressed to, um, the mayor. And it provides three options under this scenario. Uh, one is to keep the, uh, keep our debt service payments approximately the same and just pay off the loan a little bit sooner. Option two is to have the final loan maturity remain the same, but instead have the, have reduced debt payments every month so that, but the termination date would be the same. And option number three is to pay off the remaining balance of the loan. What option number three provides us is compared to two thousand and ten, or probably two thousand and nine when we got the, started the process, um, to today, interest rates have gone down and so we do have the possibility of, um, refinancing or taking out a loan to pay off, pay off, um, the O W R B loan, which typically we don't, typically that's, that's, uh, once it's, it's in their system, uh, we would have to give their permission if they've already sold bonds, um, with expected, uh, rates and maturity dates, um, that would not be an option to us. So, so basically by the Water Resources Board, um, choosing to refinance their own bonds, it provides us an opportunity to get a free exit if we want to and potentially save some money. And so we've, uh, reviewed this with our, um, our financial consultant, uh, B O S C, who has assisted us numerous times over the last, um, several years, um, as we've looked at different financing options. And they have estimated that, uh, we could, uh, refinance, excuse me, um, take out a loan, a bank qualified loan, uh, pay this off and probably save about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, um, and that is after their, their, after all transactional costs are involved as well. So what we are asking for you tonight is permission, um, we are.
Excuse me, transactional costs, is that the fees to that firm?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I don't have a fee schedule for you. This is kind of a preliminary step where you, if you are willing to go forward tonight with option three, uh, which basically what you'd be allowing staff to do is to, is to, um, work with our financial consultant and bring back a package together to you that you could officially, uh, approve.
Now, they'll get fees for doing that for us.
Yes, they will get fees.
And when we add paying this off and getting their fees, the number I'd wanna see is what is the actual savings?
One fifty-nine thousand five hundred dollars.
I didn't see that, I guess I overlooked that.
Right now, sir's.
I guess I overlooked that, sorry.
It's one fifty-eight.
About a hundred fifty-eight thousand.
And you got their fees in?
That's already been removed.
It's already been removed.
So how much is their fees?
We do not have that, that.
That's one thing that we, uh, when we did this pool deal, I was very upset about some of their fees in there, so.
It's about one point six percent alone, they estimated it'd be about ninety thousand.
Well, do we have, do we have to have them to redo this? Can the city manager and treasurer, can they negotiate that just without the bond people?
It's an excellent question, and unfortunately, um, Sydney and I talked about this and we, we were very, um, very concerned about fees as well, we knew you would be, unfortunately, um, we're a little bit under the gun because of timing on this, the, that letter was dated March twenty-fourth, um, by the time we got it, made it here to your second meeting in April, and the state needs an answer by May twelfth, unfortunately, and so we're, we're on a very compressed schedule, so realistically, I think if we were to do this, we would, we would need to engage our financial consultant just because of staff time.
I believe we do, item number three, and hopefully that, uh, we'll get an opportunity to take a look at those fees because like I said on that pool deal.
He's gonna propose it, uh, the, the next meeting, right? You know what you said?
We would bring back a package to you that would include, include the, um, the rates, all of the fees, and then you could reject it at that time, in which case we would just stay with staff's.
Continue on what we're doing, continue on the.
Justin, what does this, does this have, what kind of impact, if any, would this have if we wanna, you know, float more bonds to do another water project later this year?
Okay, I didn't, I, it would actually, it would be fine, we can do bank qualifying loan, bank qualifying up to ten million dollars a year. This is the first, um, it would only be for fi- about five point four million, so This is the first, it would only be for about 5.4 million, so we would have the additional money as of December.
About four million.
Yeah, to December 30th. But if we needed more money for some oddball reason, because I know we've looked at, Steve and I talked about capital and there might be some funding issues we need there, we can do it, we get another 10 million bank qualified.
From January 1?
January 1. The difference between bank qualified and not bank qualified is the interest rate's a little bit cheaper.
I mean, we already know, I mean, we know there's a lot of water projects we've got to do, right? We'd be going, and we'd be doing the same thing. We'd be, we wouldn't do a bank qualified, we'd be, we'd be going the bond route, right?
It all depended what's available at the time and what we were exactly doing. We may want to do an Oklahoma Water Resource Board or we might want to just do a bank qualified, depending on the dollar amount and what our terms that we want.
You're saying that this wouldn't have any impact?
No, it would not have any impact. Our debt ratio for the banks are very high, it's very good. Actually, this will be lowering, I know it's only a little bit, 10, about $10,000 a year of debt service.
That's what you're saving on the interest, it's about $10,000.
Because that $158,000 is over a 10-year period.
Yeah.
Is this using the same collateral that we have?
It's the same thing, we just rolled the same thing. We still have that debt out there.
But you're saying we'd have to wait till January?
No, we could do if...
Four million this year and then another 10 in January.
Or we could do some bank qualified, like with the expo loan part, it was bank qualified and some of it wasn't. It's just the interest rate, it's cheaper, it's cheaper to borrow a bank qualified.
What about through OWRB? Is it actually, is there a benefit in that as well? Or like for us to take that off of their books and then like this 5.4 million now if we were to refinance it some other place? Does, can we go back to OWRB?
Oh, yeah, we have options to borrow from OWRB at any time.
Okay.
What they're trying to do is clear up some of this 2010 bond money so they can do some other projects. And it's the interest rate, what they're trying to do is to lower the interest rate so you can save money. Our savings are about $10,000 a month.
The estimates in, that were supplied to you basically had a 2.5% interest that they really think possibly is going to be more than that. But, I mean, they don't want to say it's going to be two and guess what, it comes in two and a half.
Would Water Resources Board, you know, lower their rates if you come back and say, hey, you know, we may just pay this off?
This is what the bond was sold for so they can...
They're going to refinance that batch of bonds that they did for 2010. And what's going to happen is they are going to reap the rewards for lower interest rate. They are going to only give us 30% of the savings and they will keep seven.
Or there's other, with option three?
We get 100% minus.
100% of the savings.
That's why...
You're going to come back with a package if we agree to do this? And would this, would this be, would this be competed, you know, let whatever banks?
Yes, and remember, in order to take on debt, it has to be unanimous. Everybody has to be on board. So that's why we're asking for direction now because...
That's what I'm saying. That's why I made the motion, we'll see if we have everybody's support to do the third, to refinance the whole thing.
To save 160,000 bucks.
Yeah, 158,000, 160,000.
And the term is the same, the number of years?
We had options of shortening it too. We can, we can do, we don't want to do that because that's, no, they gave us the option of that. Didn't want to shorten it because we are going to have to take more debt for some of the water projects.
But it's, it'll be paid off in how many years?
10.
10, okay. And that's how many years are left now, approximately?
Yes, ma'am.
So we're not stretching it out farther or anything. It's just kind of what we're doing.
And option two, or option, well, option one, it says keep the debt service payments approximately the same, pay off the loan earlier. We're talking about two months.
Yeah, that's not, that's crazy. I don't care what it is, we just didn't want to make more payments.
Okay, we have a motion by Vice Mayor Harrod. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Hall. And for us to do this, we, it doesn't have to be unanimous tonight, but the next one it does, right?
No, ours except loan documents and stuff, yes.
Right. So the next one, be sure that you fully understand this and so that the next one, when you vote next meeting, is that it has to be unanimous by all of us to vote for it.
Lisa, could you read the motion?
I just had a motion to approve step number three and then staff would bring back the...
Proposal. Right, option three, right? The one where it was refinanced through another institution.
Okay, let's vote. Did that clear? Excuse me, I didn't want to cut you short. Are you okay, Commissioner Shaw?
Uh, yes and no. I didn't see what the language was laying there, but that's okay.
Yes, he's going to come back with something.
Motion carries. Okay. Uh, any new business?
No, sir, no new business.
Okay, I will adjourn our meeting tonight. Thanks for each and every one of you.
Did you need this back? If you don't have it, you've got a couple stacks of it. Yeah, I just sold, I sold 24,000.
Yeah. It was supposed to be 25,000.
I know. I trust you. I'm sure Shaw...
If we don't, we don't have to have a quorum practice so we don't fly.